I pledge with allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of it, which it stands, one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I gotta say, it's really nice to see all these people out in the audience again. We've missed that sorely, so thank you for coming and watching today. So I wanted to just make sure that everybody knows this is a public meeting, and we are recording it both via audio and visual. And this is a public meeting, so if you want to address the board, please do so when called and by saying your name and your address. Awards and recognition, I know we have a special one right out of the gate. And Scott Sager, I think, Scott, are you wanting to go first, or are you still working on paperwork back there?
Paperwork back here.
Okay, so on that, we'll see if there's anybody else that has any awards recognition. Do you have anything?
Nope.
Commissioner Murdock, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Nope. Wish I could be there to see Scott and his presentation, but I guess I'll have to see it online.
All right, well, I'm sure it's gonna be just fine online, too. So, all right, with that, Mr. Sager.
Thanks for having us. Actually, I'm here representing Blue Mountain Insurance Professionals.
Real quick, Scott, just for the record, would you say your name and address?
Yeah, Scott Sager, fuel box 41A, Powder Rock, Oregon. And our group is, we've been around forty-plus years off and on, and we're a nonprofit mutual benefit organization that works towards community projects. And I'm here today to help support the search and rescue organization. Is it okay if I turn this way?
Absolutely.
On July the 2nd of last year, three young men were hiking in a very deep canyon about ten miles south of Powder Rock. There's no roads in there, there's no cellphone service, and a terrible accident happened, and all three of them fell into a ravine. One of the young men was named Cody Watson. His mother is here with me today, and his grandmother will be here. His grandmother is a member of our organization. Cody and his two companions were seriously injured due to the fall, and our search and rescue people had a great degree of difficulty getting to them. Cody died that night in that canyon. Cody was a sergeant with the National Guard. He was a very inquisitive, inspiring individual, he was very motivated. He had just been awarded the opportunity to go to flight training school through the US military. So he was on his way to a dream of being a military pilot. He died that night on that mountain. Our search and rescue people had a degree of difficulty. It took two helicopters and a lot of work to get the people out and everything. And our organization wishes to donate $5,000 to the search and rescue organization in Cody's name. Cody liked doing things for the public. His life was dedicated to service, and I know that he would want equipment and training for the search and rescue. His mother, Holly Hill, is here with us. His grandmother, Sharon, excuse me, Sharon Gaines is a member of our insurance organization, and she's on her way here, but we're doing first in line, so.
We can do another photo op, too, in front of the dais with everybody, because this is important to us.
Catherine Gaines here from the newspaper, so if you don't mind, I'll let you award this to the search and rescue people. Can I just say anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, we thank the commissioners, we thank search and rescue, and we thank county government very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Scott, we can do this again, too.
Thank you all.
Okay, with that, we'll start going following the agenda approved of the previous minutes. Move for approval? Move for approval of the minutes from February 28, 2022, and March 2, 2022. Okay, I'll second the motion. We got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Public input of recognition of visitors. If you want to address the board on any item that's not on the agenda, now is your time to do so. Was that a hand that went up?
I didn't see one.
Okay. Okay, number one, Umatilla Basin and Watershed Council presentation.
John, Terry raised his hand.
Oh, Terry, oh, okay, I thought it was that, okay. Yeah, Sheriff.
Good morning, Chairman Schaefer. I just wanted to express my sincere thank you and appreciation to the Blue Mountain Insurance Professionals for their generous donation to our search and rescue team. As you know, our team is built up of volunteers. Many times what we struggle with is the equipment that they utilize to perform the duties that they do. And like in this case, there were significant expertise and demonstration of ropes performance to get down into that ravine to aid in the rescue of those individuals. And my heart goes out to the family, but at the same time, I wanted to say a big thank you to Scott Sager and his organization for that generous donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. I know he was on the radio in Hermiston this morning, otherwise he would have been here in person, so. Okay. Umatilla Basin and Watershed Council presentation. We have anybody from there?
We didn't receive the presentation beforehand, and I don't, it would be Michael Ward. He's not online.
I don't see him on there.
Okay, so I guess we don't have that.
All right, we'll move forward with number two, the audit presentation.
My name's Cameron Anderson, I'm with Barnett and Morrell, 975 Southeast Fourth Street in Hermiston. I'm the shareholder in charge of the audit of the financial statements for the county for June 30, 2021. And I'm just here to present to the board just an update on, we've completed the audit. The audit is right there, all 160 pages of it. Just to give you an update, we look at transactions. We do confirmations with third parties. So our audit report states that the financial statements are materially correct, in our opinion. We also, since you guys received quite a bit of federal funds, more so this year due to the pandemic, we did considerable work on single audit testing, which is testing over federal awards. All that to say, we have no findings or negative comments on the audit, so it's an unmodified report, so it's a clean audit. So I just wanna thank Robert and Marie and his staff for helping us out during the audit, so. Yeah, I guess if you guys have any questions or you want me to go through it at all.
Page by page.
Page by page, okay.
Well, actually, we'll let Commissioner Murdock go page by page through this. We're against the budget.
Thanks, Cameron.
It looks like Commissioner Murdock does have something to say.
I just wanted you to be aware, although we're not going to go through the audit in great detail, that I did participate in the exit interview earlier this morning with Cameron, Robert, and Marie. So there has been Commissioner eyes on the report prior to it coming to the board.
Okay, any questions for me?
None for me, thank you.
None for me. Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Robert, Marie, I know Robert's in the room, I don't see Marie, but I want to thank you for all your hard work on this. I know in a typical year, a budget is something, a clean audit is very impressive, but when you're talking about as many federal dollars that came through this year, it's even more so impressive than the work your unit staff did. So congratulations and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo that 100%. I would move to receive and accept the audit for fiscal year 2021 as presented by Barnett and Morrell and Cameron.
Second, and a comment I wish to make.
Please just go for it.
I don't know that it was made clear during that presentation, but that was an absolutely totally clean audit. They have a letter that they provide to us. There are no comments in the letter. That is a very, very rare achievement to, I know we have thanked Marie and Robert, but to have a totally clean audit, particularly with all the unique and different funds that came into the county during the last year, I think it's a spectacular accomplishment on their part.
Thank you again, Sir Murdock, appreciate that. Oh, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. And Scott, just give me the high sign when you're ready, Scott Sager. When you're ready for when Grandma gets here, let us know, and we'll pause. So just give me the high sign when you're ready.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving along, number three, the Greater Hermiston Enterprise Zone Expansion. I think we have Mark Morgan here to talk about that.
Good morning, commissioners. As you all know, I'm the designated zone manager for Greater Hermiston Enterprise Zone since about 2012. Greater Hermiston Enterprise Zone has been in existence since the 1980s. It expanded to include the county as co-sponsors on the zone in 2009, when we added the lot for Shears Foods at the time. In 2017, we went through a zone expansion to include some areas up by the I-4, I-2 freeway interchange. Since that time, we've experienced development on just under 300 acres of some of our prime industrial land that's located inside of the enterprise zone area. So one of the things we're doing to prepare for future additional economic development and job creation and investment in Umatilla County is looking at how do we make sure that we continue to have properties that are not only well-served by utilities, but also primed and ready for working with all of the unique requests that come from these large-scale investments that come into the region. So what is being proposed this morning is to expand the zone generally along Feedville Road using the Hermiston School District boundary on the east side as the boundary for the expansion, extending off to the west with the Umatilla River. Mainly, the reason for that area as being the expansion is that that area is all either currently zoned for industrial use or it is zoned agricultural with a future industrial zoning designation. So that again is the area that faces the least amount of barriers and obstacles for future development down in that area. So we've been working with county on this expansion since late last year. We initiated the process in January to expand the zone, mailed out notices to all of the impacted taxing jurisdictions, jurisdictions that have taxing authority in that area. We reached out directly by phone and in person with several of the larger ones in that area. Have received no negative feedback regarding the zone from the impacted entities in that area. So we would recommend that as a co-sponsor of the zone, you approve the expansion. The city council did approve the zone expansion at their February 28 council meeting, and the Port of Umatilla provided their consent to the expansion at their March 8 meeting. With that, it's Stanford, any questions?
Mark, thank you. I think that's an incredibly important area to all of Umatilla County as we kind of reach into the future. Enterprise zones have changed over time, and at one time, Hermiston basically from the airport to I-82 all the way to 395 in 1996, when UP put in their locomotive remanned facility. Hermiston took advantage of that and put that enterprise zone, a lot of what you're actually rezoning again. So a lot of this is actually rezoned to a past enterprise zone that was abandoned. And that one paid off extremely well, and I don't see this one being any less more important to the future, especially to the west end. And I think it's a great step forward. I know that there's a lot of expense into preparing these. There's nothing easy about them. And I look forward to seeing the activity in the near future.
I've had the legislature meeting with you a couple, on a couple different occasions, so I don't have any questions. I don't know if Commissioner Murdock has any. I know he was at those meetings as well.
I'm there, I'm offering up a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Move forward. To word it, but obviously, a motion to move forward with the proposal.
So BCC 2022-010, second.
Yeah, I have it as an agenda, unfortunately, so.
Yeah, so that's the board order, so. Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Yeah, we have a couple in the back, David and Ben, do you want to?
I'll come up with it. Joint Enterprise Zone Managers.
Same time.
I'm Benjamin Bergner, I'm with the City of Stanfield, the city manager there. We've got Dave Slott with the city administrator for the city of Echo. We are actually joint managers of the Stanfield-Echo Enterprise Zone. We are made aware of this expansion a couple weeks ago, and we've had discussions with Hermiston as well as the commissioners about this and our concerns with, just as we'd mentioned, the taxing districts definitely have their concerns, they've been working with that, but it does have impact to both Hermiston, Stanfield, and Echo since these areas are right between all of our cities. Through those discussions, we had agreed that would be, we would consent and agree to Hermiston Enterprise Zone expanding, taking over that area as long as our areas had the consideration when impact fees are discussed for any future development, that Stanfield and Echo Enterprise Zone is also considered, because it does impact our area as well. Sorry if I wrecked that.
That sounds exactly right. And we wanted to thank, you know, Hermiston and the commissioners for talking with us about it, because I realize that Hermiston has put some infrastructure into there at their expense and gone through all the processes. It just, it kind of bumped into where we are outside, because we're in our UGBs and kind of expanded out and took us by surprise a little bit. And so we were, that's the reason why we were concerned, that it was just kind of encroaching on our communities and our enterprise zone areas for us, because Stanfield can only expand east and west, can't really go north or south. And Echo is kind of in the same sort of thing, I come north to the freeway, and that's it. So just trying to figure out those processes, and we appreciate the fact that you guys have been working with us. And I wouldn't reiterate that we would like to be involved if we do get businesses in there and community fees become available through the county and Hermiston that we have at least sit down and discuss those, because they are going to impact our communities, without a doubt.
Thanks, you guys. At least in my case, I wasn't involved. I was disappointed I wasn't invited, but there are, I think the commissioners as a group have to take philosophical stands as a group and kind of frame those so that people, including investors and others, know where the commissioners stand. In fact, I was at a meeting, a city council meeting, and I think Commissioner Murdock really kind of laid it out really pretty clear at that time with that commission, is that the goal was to spend those monies in the areas that they were generated. And I think that, to the most part, that the commissioners have really kind of honored what Commissioner Murdock made in that statement. I think that as a commission, we need to sit down and have those philosophical discussions so that we do project as a group what direction we want to go with some of that. So I appreciate you guys coming in, for sure. And it's always fun to work with all of you. There's a lot of good things happening, and not just economic development, but socially and community-wise. And I think that it's a team that works together extremely well, and I appreciate that.
We do, too. Thank you.
Yeah, Mark, yeah, just to follow, as was mentioned, we did have good conversations with our neighbors there in Echo and Stanfield. And so I think, you know, the west end of the county is different than a lot of areas. You know, Umatilla County is a massive county. We've got different kind of communities all over the area. And the west end of the county is different in that we have a lot more individual communities that all really form one larger, broader community. And so I think as we move forward, if we get some investment into the Greater Hermiston Zone in that impact area, I think it definitely would behoove all of us to make sure that we're taking into account the entire west end of the county when we're looking at those allocations.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for educating. Commissioner Murdock, did you want to say anything else before we vote?
No, I just went off so I could vote.
Okay. All right, well, here it is, we have a motion, a second, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming for that, Mark, Ben, and Dave. Really appreciate you guys being here for that, so. Okay, Scott, I'm checking in. We good still?
Not here yet.
Okay.
On our way.
All right. Number four, Umatilla River Trail Concept Plan. And this is going to be a public hearing, so we are going to suspend our regular meeting and go into hearing mode. And with that, I'm going to call up, actually, I'm going to read this first before I do that. So ladies and gentlemen, I call the land use hearing before the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners to order. My name is John Schaefer, and I am the chair of the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners and board in the A-Zone of the Planning Department. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning a request to adopt the River Trail Concept Plan to the Umatilla County Transportation System Plan. The concept plan provides proposed trail routes to connect the cities of Umatilla, Hermiston, Stanfield, and Echo with a focus along the Umatilla River while utilizing existing trails and paths. The plan was developed with stakeholder and public involvement. The plan does not provide engineered drawings, but an implementation committee has been formed to begin the early stages of trail development. And I believe former Commissioner Bill Ellering is on that committee as well. I will begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application. I will then ask the applicant to testify, followed by those in favor of the application. Then, any persons in opposition or who have questions or concerns will also have a chance to speak. If there is opposition or questions, staff may respond to them. The commissioners also may ask the staff and witness questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. When you testify, please begin by clearly stating your name and address. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want us to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions, or other documents or physical evidence, please provide it to me or to the staff, and it'll be marked as part of the record. With that, we will go to the staff reports. Mr. Walder.
Thank you, Commissioner Schaefer. Bob Walder, County Planning Director, here today extending for Megan Dobczeski, who is out sick. But we are here to seek adoption of the Umatilla River Trail Concept Plan as part of our Transportation System Plan. And the reason for doing this is so, our understanding is, if it can be adopted into our Transportation System Plan, that increases the likelihood that we can be selected for grant funding opportunities. So this project has been a coordinated effort with the cities of Echo, Stanfield, Hermiston, and Umatilla. We've been working on it, discussing the concept since clear back to 2017, 2018 timeframe. And in 2019, I believe, we were selected for a technical assistance grant from the National Park Service to help us develop this concept plan. The plan provides information on the community process and recommendations for a new trail that would connect all four communities. And it provides information on the overall benefits, uses, types of trails, and amenities. And it represents the community's collective conceptual vision for the trail and its culmination of the hard work, vision, partnerships, and collaboration that has gone into this project. Since the development, or the finalization of the concept plan, we assembled an implementation committee who's been actively meeting for the last several months. It's made up of a couple of community members from each of the communities, as well as two representatives from the county, with Commissioner Doran and planning staff serving as technical advisors for the project, helping facilitate the meetings. And with that, the objective today is to adopt the plan by reference into our TSP. And then adoption will allow the implementation to seek grant funding for route refinement, engineering, permitting, and development. Are there any questions?
Before we get into the questions, I just want to call for any extensions, bias, conflict of interest, declaration of experte contact, and objections to any jurisdiction boundaries. Hearing ended, back to the questions. I review the documents, I don't have any questions.
I know them. They're actually very exciting documents, and I think it's going to be important to hear from the folks.
The concept plan is posted on our website. I don't have the whole plan in your packets. I know most of you are familiar with it. I believe we have some members of the committee that may want to testify today in the public comment portion.
Okay. Well, with that, I will call for any proponents, for either the applicant or representative or any other proponents to come to the dais and speak. Former Commissioner Ellering, come on up.
Committee Chairman.
Thank you all. Bill Ellering, 1889 East Highland Avenue, Hermiston, Oregon. I wanted to speak in behalf of this proposal to make the changes in the draft that you have there. This project has been underway, not on the table, that's a wrong term. On the table means it's not moving. It has been moving for about the past eight years, when a former planning director and I sat discussing things that could benefit the east end of the county. And at the same time, I believe, we had a program going to improve the health of Umatilla County, which is all of our concern. We discussed the establishment of the trail along the Umatilla River that is historic, cultural, particularly to the tribes that occupied this land before we came. It factored into the health equation on the study that was being done at the time, also to improve the livability of Umatilla County, to improve the economic opportunities. Many people look at what amenities are available in the communities before they locate, and this was one that would factor into that. So it's a, we came up with this idea, began to implement it. There's been a lot of work that's gone on in the last eight years to get it to this point. We're to the point now where it's almost time for dirt to fly. It's really getting exciting now. But I want to thank the commissioners for their generous appropriation to the committee. It really helps give the committee legs to move forward. It costs money sometimes to just help develop a concept. I want to thank you also for giving us access to and the help of the Umatilla County Planning Department. Bob's been tremendous help to us to put this together and to coordinate all the moving parts to make it work. And that's, it's, it probably would already be underway had it not been for a couple of years of delay due to COVID. And I'm really proud to say some of those days are over.
Garbage cans right back there, if you want.
Still need them in places like hospitals, so I still carry them around. But I do appreciate this opportunity to speak to the project. I think it will benefit Umatilla County. It will attract people here who might not have come otherwise to live and come to just experience the trail. It's been found that people do pay attention to when new trails are being developed and like to come to experience that. So thanks for your help, and I speak in support of the.
Chairman Ellering, one of the things that I think kind of gets lost in this, because it is a big elephant we're trying to. because it is a big elephant we're trying to take little bites out of. But I think that if people look at what the city of Yumitilla has already started with the new walking path that comes across there, all of the trails that Hermiston's developed along with the Oxbow, the river in front of Good Shepherd, all the way down Diagonal, all of that. Then you get to Stanfield with their, all of those existing berm trails and get to Echo, all of the work they've done just in a short period, down by the church, done to the Fort Henrietta. We just got to tie it together, but it's, it is taking little bites of that big elephant at a time. And the project is technically underway.
It is.
But we need to fill it in, for sure.
And speaking to that, the the elephant tastes pretty good right now.
Yeah.
And I did omit saying the involvement of the of the cities, or they're intimately involved in this in this project. As Commissioner Doran has has spoken, they they have their own paths and recreational trails developed in their communities. And this is designed to tie all that together and make it one large trail.
I think it's fitting that we have so many of the cities being represented here today as well.
We do.
As part of this. So it's, it was just a happenstance, but I think it's fantastic that they're all here.
It all worked.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. As I know, yeah, come on up.
Good morning. My name is Tammy Williams, P L Block 273, Echo, Oregon 97826. And I too thank the commissioners for all the support you've given us on these trails and grants. I mean, that was wonderful. Thank you. And he's been great. I mean, we couldn't, you couldn't have given us anybody better to help us work on this trail. I want to talk about the balance of the county. I think this Yumitilla walking trail is, has made, is going to make Yumitilla County and our communities be more of a balance. Because we can, usually the world's focus is to develop, 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 and we forget the people. We forget the families. We forget the individual. Because the development's great. We're going to have an Amazon. We're going to have a Costco. We're going to have a Fred and Myers. But we actually forget the people sometimes. And this is our gift to the community, to the people. Because all we really own in life is our soul and our spirit. And sometimes when we can't get out to nature, we lose that. And I just want to kind of just kind of give a little vision. You wake up in the morning and you're in your tight little house, and you're going to have a bad day. And then when you walk outside, if you can hear a bird sing, or you can see a deer, or you can, you can see a flower, your life changes. It just, your day changes. Your day opens up. This trail for the people, because we're we're building so much, and and actually, I'm going to go back one step. Even though we live in a rural community, still, you can't walk on Uni-Pacific, you're trespassing. You can't walk on the irrigation canal, you're trespassing. You can't walk on farmers' lands because, and I understand that, because you're trespass. You can, you can damage it. They don't want you to. I understand that. But this gives a place where people can walk. They can walk in nature. They're going to be able to look at the one of the most beautiful things in our county, the Yumitilla River. It's absolutely gorgeous. But we don't even have very many accesses to the Yumitilla River. We can't even get into it because it's private property or Uni-Pacific that abuts it all the way. So this Yumitilla walking trail is going to open that up. And we're going to bring good things to our families. We're going to bring good things to our kids with this. And we need it now. We need it now after what we've been through. We need a place that we can go and be with people. There's no TV. It's families, or you're alone. You have time to work on your soul and your spirit, and you're out in nature. So I support this totally. And and I so appreciate the privilege of being on the Yumitilla Walking Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. I do, there is no doubt in my mind that this project's going to succeed, because we have cheerleaders like Tammy and, but as as great a cheerleader as Tammy is, and she may be the cheerleader of cheerleaders, everybody around that table has the same same vision, the same drive, and the same let's get it done spirit. So thanks, Tammy.
Dave, come on up.
David Slatt, City Administrator, Echo, Oregon, 20 South Bonanza, 97826. I'm here to speak on in support of the trail. I came into management of the city in 19. Trail had been started, and we had floods and disasters and a lot of things go on. And I have to say that Tammy, you know, she's she's on our council and one of my bosses in Berlin. Emerson is also on there. And the passion that Tammy brings is addictive. And I really appreciate that. Appreciate working for her. But I also appreciate the fact that we're moving forward and getting things done in the small community of Echo, and it's moving forward. And I'm really glad to see that, especially since we formed the West Side Development Committee, whatever the managers on the West Side, where we do a lot of stuff, that keeps that communication going and that system moving forward. And I think every piece of this is a puzzle that's coming together and really coming, I can't, I'm not as elegant as Tammy, but having that that vision through our four communities on the West Side along the river is imperative that we keep going. And I also want to thank you for the grant that you put and got that started. That was the kickstart for this next phase, and it would not have happened without that. So I really appreciate that. And on behalf of the community and my administration, thank you. And we support this 100%.
Thank you very much. Thanks, David.
Okay, any other proponents? Yeah, Mark.
Yeah, Mark Morgan, 180 Northeast Second Street in Hermiston. Don't want to go over everything that's already been said, but, you know, we've all seen plans, you know, put forward in the past, and we always get barbs thrown at us that, oh, that's just going to sit on a, you know, shelf and collect dust or something like that. But I'm all about those plans, because what they do is they provide certainty, even if it sits on a shelf for a year or something like that, other components, you know, don't ever get built. It provides certainty to everybody to know that this is now in our Transportation System Plan. And if there's one thing we know about investment, whether it's private investment or public investment, investment hates uncertainty. And so the going through this process that took eight, upwards of eight years, as Commissioner, former Commissioner mentioned, it took that long to get all of these different communities and landowners and stakeholders and everybody to come around to a plan that shows if we want to have trails in our community to go through that area, this is the place where it's going to go. And so on the public side of things, we get hit up all the time for resources for wouldn't it be great to do X, Y, Z project over here? Wouldn't it be great to do something over there? There's always more requests than there are resources that we have. And so having a plan like this in place allows us to, when those requests come up or an opportunity arises, we can pull it off the shelf and say, yeah, that's great. This is exactly where we can invest those types of dollars. And on the private side of things, you know, there are landowners out there that they're going to change. Things are going to change hands over time. It's important for them to know that this is something that the community values and wants to see go through that area in the way that it does. And so it just provides everybody certainty when they're making those investment decisions. And so, again, it's already been been mentioned a couple of times, I've got my hats off to the County Planning Staff for shepherding this through the process, because it's quite a bit of work.
Thank you very much.
I never get tired of you guys praising our staff, so. So, thank you very much. Any other proponents? Okay. Call now for comments for public agencies. I don't know if there are any, Bob, is there?
I don't believe we had any.
Yeah.
There was some communication from the tribe that isn't reflected. They presented the planning commission, so there are some comments that are in the minutes.
Great. Thank you. Pretty sure I don't even need to call for this one, but call for any opponents. That's kind of what I thought. Okay. And so any rebuttal, there's no need for rebuttal. I don't think we need to request for containers to keep it open. Open. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing. And we'll go into deliberation and decision.
I would move to pass P dash 131 dash 22, adoption of Yumitilla River Trail Concept Plan to the Yumitilla County Transportation System Plan.
Second with comment.
Please continue.
I don't know how many of you remember Tony Hyde. He was a county commissioner for years in Columbia County. And I can remember early on, he described to me the fact that Columbia County spent 30 years developing a walking trail. And there was a whole lot of bumps, such as we're experiencing here. But he said now it is one of the high points of Columbia County. It was an incredible accomplishment. And however long it takes us to complete this project, I think it's going to be equally wonderful in Yumitilla County.
Thank you. With that, we have a motion and a second. Can we feel the discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'm going to pause our agenda. I know we were supposed to do the regional trail plan now, but I see that Scott's got everybody in place. So I would, at this time, people all indulge me. I would like it, Scott, if you'd bring everybody back up for a photo opportunity at this time. And Scott, I'd like it if everybody would introduce themselves for for the record, so everybody knows who the search and rescue folks are and everything.
Okay.
And they can all introduce themselves.
This is Sharon Gaines. Go ahead, name.
I'm Sharon Gaines. I'm a member of the Blue Mountain Insurance Professionals and the grandmother of Cody Watson.
Holly Go, mom of Cody Watson.
Scott Sager, Pilot Rock, Oregon.
Sherry Mueller, UMass.
Dottie Carroll, Searcher, UMass.
William Morris, UMass. I asked Sharon to come up and introduce herself. She's a member of our organization, and she was instrumental in pointing out the importance of community service and the stuff that her grandson Cody Watson was dedicated to. As I mentioned to you, he was a member of the National Guard. He was a sergeant. And he had just been admitted to military flight training. He was going to be a pilot. He donated that part of his life to service. Sharon knows a little bit about our organization. She knows a lot about her daughter and their family, and the importance of community service and search and rescue. So I'd like her to comment a little bit about the things that search and rescue does for the community. A lot of people don't understand, but in this county, we go everywhere from scuba diving in the Columbia River, you know, to the mountains of the North Fork and all of the things in between. So.
Scott, can we get everybody just to kind of line up right in front of the deus here? I think that'd be it. So you can have the search and rescue folks up, too. Just kind of come right on up in front of us. Yeah, that's fine. That's exactly it.
Well, and I, my apologies for being late this morning. Just kind of a family emergency going on and best laid plans and all. So I am a member, as Scott mentioned, of the Blue Mountain Insurance Professionals. And as insurance professionals, we're dedicated to supporting worthy causes and giving back into our community to support causes like search and rescue. And what so many people don't understand is most of these people are volunteering their time to to put themselves in harm's way to help our fellow citizens when they're in a bad situation. And it's a huge county.
It is.
And it can be from the desert to the mountains and everything in between. And so we, I was, I was so pleased that Blue Mountain Insurance Professionals chose to honor Cody's memory by making this donation, so that they can use those funds for the tools and training that they need to perfect the next rescue. They, they, you know, get the call, and they go forward to rescue. And they did rescue successfully Brayden Postma and Kyler Carter, and then they recovered Cody. And so they put themselves in harm's way to do that. So the more training they have, and the more tools they have, then they can do that job more safely. So we're pleased to be able to do that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and Cody was an exceptional young man. Truly. He was, he was our cornerstone. Sorry. There she goes again. So, anyway.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, everybody, for allowing me to pause the meeting for that. I think that as important as that was, that needed to be to be allowed to interrupt our meeting. So, thank you again. Okay, so now it looks like we have another public hearing. This one's on the Blue Mountain Regional Trail Plan, very similar to the one we just did. So, and forgive me, I have to read the same script again. So I'll read it fast. So, so we will pause our regular meeting and we'll go into public hearing mode at this time. So ladies and gentlemen, I call this land use hearing before the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners to order. Again, my name is John Schaefer, and I'm the Chair of the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners and Board Liaison to the Planning Department. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning a request to adopt the Yumitilla River Trail Concept Plan to the Yumitilla County Transportation System Plan. The Concept Plan provides proposed trail routes to connect the cities of Yumitilla, Hermiston, Stanfield, and Echo. Is that the right, am I reading the right one, Bob? Yeah, I was like, wait a minute, that's round one.
It's a part of the same document, I think.
It may be just a separate paragraph.
Yeah, so we'll just, all right. I'll begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application. I'll then ask the applicant to testify, followed by those in favor of the application. Then any persons in opposition or who have questions or concerns will also have a chance to speak. If there is an opposition or question, staff may respond to them. The commissioners also may ask the staff and witnesses questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral and or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. When you testify, please begin by clearly stating your name and address. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want us to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions, or other documents or physical evidence, please provide it to me or the staff. It'll be marked as part of the record. Thank you. I feel like my wife talking right there. Okay. Any abstentions, bias, conflict of interest, declaration of expertise contact, or objections to jurisdiction? Seeing none, at this time, I'll call the staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Bob Walder, County Planning Director. Similar to the the plan that you just adopted, this plan is also a regional trails plan. And it was a bit of a precursor to the Yumitilla River Trail Plan. We worked with the National Park Service in 2016 to develop the Blue Mountain Region Trail Plan. And it only covers a small portion of Yumitilla County. As you know, the county is part of the Metropolitan Metropolitan Planning Organization. And so the city of Milton Freewater, as well as corridor there along Highway 11, is included in this planning effort. But the entire entirety of Walla Walla County was included in this since they are part of the MPO. But regardless, we had a very robust public involvement process, a number of public hearings. I think there were eight sessions total, and we we had a meeting in each community with just under 1,000 comments collected. So it was a really big effort. This plan was also a little bit different in the fact that it wasn't specific to one trail. It covered a variety of transportation, active transportation modes, as well as closing the gap on, say, inside a city limits, for example, where you have sidewalk gaps that might be creating issues for children to get to school. Those were identified. So we had a safe routes to school component, as well as the recreation aspect of the project. One of the projects in Yumitilla County that's actually been implemented is the pedestrian crossings there across Highway 11 in Milton Freewater to get to the new school. That is something that came out of this plan. At any rate, we, the plan's been adopted by the Metropolitan Planning Organization, but we realize we've never adopted it into the county's Transportation System Plan. So we thought it would be a good opportunity just to have both plans included in in our TSP. So that's the purpose of of this hearing today. Any questions about that plan?
The only question I have, Bob, is the MPO is always kind of semi flux. And will this survive? Say the MPO moves, this will survive in our transportation? Say the MPO moves, this, this will survive in our transportation document? Perfect.
Yeah, so Yumitila County, assuming you approve it today, will have it adopted into our TSP. So we could still work with City of Milton-Freewater, for example, on applying for future grant opportunities and use this to do that. And, and the other jurisdictions that are part of the MPO, several of them have adopted it as well.
Yeah, we just did that in the meeting last.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, thank you. Okay, now I'll call for any proponents to the plan. Anybody in favor of it? Okay. Seeing none, any opposition, any opponents? Seeing none. Call from public agencies again, I don't think we have any on this. No. No sense for rebuttal. So at this point, we don't need to continue or keep the record open. So at that point, we're going to close the public hearing, go back to regular meeting mode and for deliberation and discussion.
I would move to pass P-132-222, adoption of Blue Mountain Region Trails Plan to County Transportation System Plan.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate that. Sheriff requests for vehicle leases. The sheriff's still on? He is. He is, carries there? Yeah. So Jim, Jim was kind of...
Good morning, commissioners. This is Jim Littlefield, under Sheriff for Yumitila County. I have Captain Wolverton and Lieutenant Josh Roberts also on. And we're presenting an item to request to lease some vehicles for our fleet. I'm going to turn it over to the captain and the lieutenant to explain the pinky in front of you.
Good morning, gentlemen. We're requesting purchase of eight Dodge Durango police vehicles that are available now.
Could I ask you for a second? Would you introduce your name and who you are?
This is Paul Wolverton, Captain with Yumitila County Sheriff's Office. And we became aware that these vehicles were available. They're 2021 vehicles that have already been manufactured through ERS. As you know, the recent issues with shipping and materials and things like that have delayed our November order. We still haven't been issued any bins from our previous order. So currently, we have no idea when we're going to receive our, our current order. These vehicles are available now and we're requesting a purchase of eight of them to replace aging vehicles in our fleet that will have even more mileage by the time we're able to get them replaced through our regular and routine ordering process. This will allow us to have less vehicles ordered in the future so we can mitigate some costs there. And I'll give it over to Lieutenant Roberts to kind of give a little bit more background on the program and what we've determined to be our, our best options with the vehicles that are available now.
Oh, you're muted. No, can't hear you, Josh. Check your speaker. No, sir.
All right, well, I guess, this is Paul Wolverton again. I guess I can answer any questions or fill in since Josh doesn't seem to be able to get his mic working this morning.
So I, I just want to commend you for, I, I know that one of the things that says the cost of a Dodge Patrol Pack's vehicles north of $10,000. And you're, because of reusing the equipment, it's going to be cheaper than what it would be at full retail. So I appreciate you guys reusing that equipment. I think that's, shows a lot of due diligence on your part, so.
Yes, thank you. We've also included in this is some of the equipment that we're for the jail transport van and the sheriff's pickup. With the ERS, we're unable to order equipment until we have a bin issued. So the equipment that we're adding to this order from our pending order will also be taken away from that. So we'll be reducing the cost of our pending order as we include some of the equipment in this order.
And it looks like the sheriff raised his hand. Sheriff.
I just had a couple of comments, Mr. Chair. First of all, I had an opportunity last week to speak with a number of other Oregon sheriffs who advised that they too are having extreme difficulties getting any Dodge products from the manufacturer. And as a matter of fact, Dodge has canceled many of their orders. And so there, there seems to be a considerable amount of uncertainty there. But to tag on to what you said, Mr. Chair, in terms of being able to pull equipment out of current Dodge vehicles and place them into the new, new Dodge vehicles does create a savings for us. And so I, I did want to mention that. The other, the other component of this is I wanted to, as we were having our internal conversations about these vehicles, I, I wanted to include the city of Pilot Rock and their police department in our conversations because if we're able to move ahead on, on this project, we could free up a, a couple of our vehicles that Pilot Rock could then purchase for their use. They have a couple of vehicles that are, you know, getting pretty high, higher mileage and becoming less and less reliable. And Chief Caldera had reached out to me during a meeting and asked if there was some, some way that we could help them out. And with the two vehicles that we have in mind, if we can transition them out of our fleet and put them basically on the market for, for their purchase, with the mileage amount that's on them, he advised that, that that would probably do them just fine over the next six to eight years. So I think we're, we're killing two birds with one stone here. And I just appreciate the consideration on, on this project. I really appreciate Captain Wolverton and Lieutenant Roberts working with ERS to put all of this together. I think we have a unique opportunity here. Unlike many other sheriffs, they're having to start all over again and move forward with ordering different types of vehicles to fulfill their needs.
Thank you, Sheriff. I think I already know the answer to my next question, but by getting these vehicles, the ones we are currently have on order, does that mean we can stop that order from occurring? Or does that, do those still come? Or what does that look like?
Commissioner, we would want to keep that order in place. These, this order here are patrol vehicles and a detective vehicle and the captain's vehicle. In the pending order, we have a number of pickups, including a K-9 replacement for the sheriff's vehicle and emergency management and also our evidence pickup. So the pending order, we'd want to keep in place because there's a lot of vehicles that are going to suit other purposes and, and replace some existing vehicles that are in need of it.
And who knows when that might be, when we see those, so.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I, I would make a motion for approval with comment after a second.
Second.
Commissioner Dorn.
I, I'd like to thank these guys, just like everybody else. Did they, when they brought this to me, it, it was a very thorough package. And then Robert had additional questions and they came back with the answers to Robert's questions and modifications, I mean, within a day. And so I appreciate both Robert's work on this, but also the full sheriff's team taking the initiative on this to start with. When I heard that we didn't even have VIN numbers yet on last year's orders, that's, that's scary. Anyway, that, that's all I had to add.
Commissioner Murlock, any question or comments?
No.
With that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sirs.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, number seven, Community Corrections Position.
Morning, commissioners. Dale Kermer, Director, Yumitila County Community Justice. Pretty straightforward request for me. I've got a long-term service specialist position in my office that is retiring after 23 years. Her last day is end of April. We're hoping to recruit and if we can find somebody and onboard somebody in time, the opportunity to, to double fill that position, I, I doubt it would be for more than a week or two, but any amount of double fill time would certainly help us in training. We don't have many of these positions, so having somebody that can spend at least a little bit of time with them before they depart would help us maintain some service level.
And your budget can support that?
Yes, it can.
Yeah. CFO as well, so. Okay, any questions?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Dave, Bob, the summary of actions. We don't have our counsel to do that, so I can read this. What was that? Okay, it looks like he just raised his hand. Doug. Oh, Doug, you must be muted.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yes, what's before the board is the summary of the Board of Property Tax Appeals. The, they held their hearings and the summary of those actions are before the board for approval. It has been updated since the email of the pinky to you and it has been corrected. So it's before the board and ready for action if needed.
Any questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move for approval with corrections.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. AOC Federal Land Management Subcommittee. So the appointment of Commissioner Dorn to the AOC Federal Land Management Subcommittee is before the board for consideration. Seeing how your name's on there, I'll just go ahead and allow you to skip out for, thanks for this one, so.
I will make the motion.
What's that? Did you make the motion?
Yes, I did.
With that, I'll second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All right? Motion carries.
And congratulations, Commissioner Dorn.
Thanks, Commissioner Murlock. Next one is Board Meeting Schedules.
What's before the board is the need to reset one of the future Board of Commissioner meeting. The one, the second meeting in April is, has a conflict due to the Budget Committee. And so the proposal is to move it up a day. So reschedule the April 20th Board meeting to April 19th is being requested.
Okay. Any questions on that? Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Supplemental budgets. And this is public hearing, so we will once again pause our regular meeting and go into hearing mode.
Doug has his hand raised. Does he have something else?
No, I think that's leftover. Thanks.
I thought he was just waving hello. I don't know, he said he'd be right back. In case you're wondering what's going on, our CFO has said he'd be right back and he stepped out for just a second, so.
Thank you, I thought I lost sound.
You're not that lucky.
Since we have some time, I do notice this meeting's going extra long since I'm not there.
Well noted.
I'm glad you peed my colleague to the punch on that one.
No, go right ahead.
Are we ready? We're ready.
Robert Paul, CFO. Excuse my charminess. There are three supplemental budgets before you this morning. I will read a summary of those. Budget Order 2022-36 foreclosed property requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $300,000 and an increase in materials and services of $300,000. Budget Order 2022-37 County Fair requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of $130,000 and an increase in materials and services of $130,000. And Budget Order 2022-41 Assessors Technology Reserve requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $400 and an increase in materials and services of $3,500 and a decrease in contingency of $3,100. Other questions?
None for me. I see we have a member of the public in the audience. Does that member have any questions?
No.
Okay, hearing ended this time. We will come out of public hearing mode to take action on those.
I would move to adopt order, Budget Order 2022-36.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. I would move to adopt Budget Order 2022-37.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. I, I would move to adopt Budget Order 2022-41.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number 12, Budget Transfers.
There are five transfers of appropriations before you this morning and I'll summarize them. Budget Order 2022-35, the General Fund Home Visit Program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $60,000 and a decrease in general fund contingency of $60,000. Budget Order 2022-38, Community Service Development requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $15,000 and a decrease in contingency of $15,000. Budget Order 2022-39, Adams Community, Adams Community Benefit Program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $40,000 and a decrease in contingency of $40,000. Budget Order 2022-40, GIS Equipment Reserve requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $10,000 and a decrease in contingency of $10,000. And Budget Order 2022-42, Fleet Management Program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $40,000 and a decrease in contingency of $40,000. Are there any questions?
None for me. Okay. Okay. With that, I entertain motions.
I move to adopt Budget Order Number 2022-35.
Second.
Motion, second, all fair of the motion, say aye.
Aye. I would move to adopt Budget Order Number 2022-38.
Second.
Motion, second, all fair of the motion, say aye.
Aye. I would move to adopt Budget Order 2022-39.
Second.
Motion, second, all fair of the motion, say aye. Aye.
I would move to adopt Budget Order 2022-40.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all fair of the motion, say aye.
Aye. I'd move to adopt Budget Order 2022-42.
Second.
Motion, second, all fair of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Cummings, Mr. Murlock.
Is that Commissioner Elfrin still there?
He is.
Well, we should thank him for his service on BAPDA, so he's served us well in the last two weeks.
That's generally a good position for expiring commissioners. All of a sudden, now he's quiet.
I'm not sure "expiring" is the right word. Maybe leaving.
If you cause expiration. Commissioner Doran?
I would like to point out that this past weekend, that Umatilla County Fair weighed in 79 steers. I know we just did a budget adjustment, and I think that as long as there's the ability to find community members to support that, that that number should go up again. 79 steers, just to put that into perspective, Marie came as close as she could at 54 steers in the past. When my daughter showed steers, the biggest year was '21. That means that Umatilla County Fair is going to continue that its tradition of one of the strongest youth steer shows in the Northwest and even on the West Coast. It is a great show, and 79 steers just is mind-boggling to me. Where we're going to put those, I don't know. When we designed Eotech, we designed it for a maximum of 40 steers, and that was pushing it, so... And I'm expecting that the numbers of the other animals are going to be in the same category. It's impressive, so my hat's off to all of those youth, especially in the steer category. At this time, I'm sure that we'll recognize the sheep and the hogs as we move on, but that's just truly mind-boggling to me.
Well, that just goes to show that how much the fairs and livestock shows have been missed thanks to COVID, so it's exciting to see those numbers and see what those kids are going to be doing, so I'd like you, my hats off to the 4-H and FBA communities.
And then I have one other thing on a much sadder note. Scott Cassi's service is this weekend on Saturday. It can be at the Hermison Community Center beginning, I believe, 3:00. It doesn't really truly have a scheduled end, but it's a sad day, for sure.
Agreed. I've worked many years with Sergeant Cassi, and it looks like Sheriff Rowan had something to say, too.
The service is actually on Friday, not Saturday, at 3:00 p.m. Yes, indeed, you know, he's got a dedicated professional dispatch member of our team that we'll greatly miss.
I am glad to hear it's on Friday, to be honest with you.
Yeah. So, like I said, I spent many years working side by side with him, and he will be sorely missed. He served this county very well and honorably for many years, so, thank you. Okay. Anything else? I think he was done with Commissioner Elfrin. Was that all you had, George?
I don't have anything else.
All right. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.